All right, we will call to order Committee of the Whole. And our first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the January thirteenth meeting. I'll move to approve without necessity of reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And our only other item on the agenda tonight is the communication from Mayor George and myself regarding the space study. And I know we have a presentation, looks like a joint effort, so who are we starting with? Okay, Mayor George?
I'll kick it off.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's go to the next slide. So why conduct a space analysis? A space assessment, it's not an anomaly or anything new to our city. The City of Lakewood regulated works to evaluate and align our municipal offices, our facilities, our real estate holdings to create efficiencies, address capacity needs, ensure high-quality resident services, and maintain our shared goal of strong fiscal stewardship. A recent example of this was the unification of the Department of Human Services at the Cove Community Center and the subsequent sale of the multiple spaces that previously served those purposes. That effort improved not only service to our residents, it also created many efficiencies and much, I would say, better services to all of our residents as well. Another similar example is the current work to shift our animal shelter to sit jointly at the same site as our Berea Road refuse and recycling facility, which will allow the city to expand its water treatment and storm capacity in the Rocky River Valley and use the soon-to-be-vacated space for that purpose. So last year, we conducted a City Hall space assessment in hopes that this would provide us with a path forward at the current City Hall. Unfortunately, the space assessment really kind of did the opposite and that it shows that even with substantial investments into the millions of dollars, it still doesn't solve many, many problems. And I would argue the number one would be the space within this building. But let's take a look back with anything, it's important to look at the history and how we've gotten here to our current City Hall. City Hall has moved, evolved, expanded, and been remodeled over the course of our city's history. You see a few pictures of there of a couple of our City Halls. The first official City Hall was established around 1910 when Mayor Catabish led the purchase of a residence at the southwest corner of Warren and Detroit to serve a City Hall. That's the building on the left. Less than ten years later, in 1918, the city bought the Robert Russell Rhodes Summer Home Mansion and its surrounding 23 acres. This house, the second picture up there, home, became the new City Hall in 1920, and the land continues to serve us as our wonderful Lakewood Park. In the 1950s, it became clear that the Rhodes House was nearing the end of its ability to house City Hall, and Mayor Frank Celeste led the effort to build a new City Hall and civic center. That building that was built in the late 1950s is still in use today over 65 years later, and here we are. Since opening in the late 1950s, the current City Hall has seen ongoing repairs and some upgrades along the way. But much has changed in terms of how cities do business, and it's been a challenge to keep up with the times in this aging building. Through the consultant study, we clarified several pressing capacity needs. I'm not going to go into all of them right now. I know Director Byington and Chief Fisher are going to talk a bit more about it, but one of the most pressing needs identified in the consultant report is the need for our female police officers to have their own locker room facilities. When our current City Hall was built, I'm sure many of you may be able to guess how many female officers we had, and that number was zero. Today, we have 14 female officers, 12 female dispatchers, and that number continues to rise. In 1960, they were unfortunately much less focused on making our buildings accessible as well. The ADA would not be passed for another 25 years, and our recent analysis shows a number of needs to address ADA here on our campus. These are two of some of the pressing challenges identified in the report, and it's clear that we must address these challenges now. And then, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Director Byington to explain some of the key findings of the space assessment itself.
Thank you, Mayor George and members of committee. In 2023, the city accepted proposals from professionals to complete a space assessment, which would provide a recommendation on how to potentially reorganize department locations and functionality. The project intended to explore modernizing the building, creating office space, utilizing unused or underutilized spaces to provide a better employee relations environment, modernize security check-in stations, provide upgrades to the fire alarm system and control panels, and provide an acceptable amount of properly-sized conference rooms with meeting technology, offices, and storage. The project also included modernizing the front entrances to City Hall and two elevators and providing more space for the police department's men's and women's locker rooms. To complete the assessment, facility study elements were analyzed, including interior architectural components, mechanical and electrical systems, fire suppression and fire alarm system, and emergency lighting, furniture, storage areas, et cetera. Departments were interviewed by Weber-Murphy Fox, and there was a survey that all employees were asked to fill out. From this information, Murphy-Weber-Fox completed conceptual floor plans and estimates for renovation and reorganization of the current City Hall, with in addition to the police station, as well as the annexed building across the street being renovated. Some of the overarching deficiencies include a lack of general desk and office and storage space, the need to make continued ADA improvements, improvements to customer service and experience, general modernizations, elevator and window replacements, as well as the fact that City Hall is located on the eastern edge of the city versus being centrally located. This time, I'll turn it over to Chief Fisher to go over some of the police department deficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can move it on. So, like Director Byington said and the mayor expressed, when the building was built in 1958, best estimates we have is there was about 62 officers at the time. Obviously, not only the personnel makeup, like the mayor said with no females, but I think we can all agree that things have changed since then. A lot more equipment, a lot more technology, a lot more need for storage. And these are all huge, huge issues. Our roll call room actually serves as the lunchroom, our kitchen, where we house our cameras, our batteries, our AEDs. And this is a place that is really the only place that officers can go to even take a five-minute break to get coffee or anything, and when they want to eat and other things. So, the dispatch center, obviously, with all the challenges going forward with them, they're going to need to be probably housed in a bigger place. Parking enforcement currently shares our locker room with SWAT. Our SWAT officers that serve on the West Shore Enforcement Bureau team, they have extensive needs for equipment. As you can probably imagine, they have specialty items that are all kind of crammed into this little area downstairs in the basement of our police department. The biggest thing, like we said, the women's locker room. The women's locker room was probably, at its best, could probably hold comfortably 10. We squeeze about 15 or 20 in there. The lockers are extremely small, skinny. I was in there the other day for the first time in a long time, and I can't imagine two or three females getting ready at one time in there. And like you said, I mean, we've got 14 right now, 14 female officers, and that number is just going to increase. The men's restroom, original, all original. So a lot of challenges going on in there. Same ventilation system, same showers since 1959, same tile, same everything, just a lot of upgrade needs. I already went over the roll call. Our evidence room, as you can imagine, evidence in cases, serious cases, needs to be held for a long time. And if we get, unfortunately, a serious case where we got to take many pieces of evidence, the evidence room becomes real small real fast. You see some pictures here. Bicycles just crowd, I mean, at lower right, that's a picture of our evidence room. Right above that is the men's locker room. Like you said, 1959 lockers, as you can see. A lot of guys have resorted to using the hooks on the walls of the locker room. Again, extremely cramped in there. When shifts are getting off and shifts are getting on, it's very tight. That middle one there, that's the women's locker room. As you can see, the need for space there is just self-explanatory. All that stuff on the other two pictures, that's down in Storage Room Five. Because of retention schedules and things like that, we have to keep things for a certain amount of time, and we are simply running out of room.
A recent example of this was the unification of the Department of Human Services at the Cove Community Center and the subsequent sale of the multiple spaces that previously served those purposes. That effort improved not only service to our residents, it also created many efficiencies and much, I would say, better services to all of our residents as well. Another similar example is the current work to shift our animal shelter to sit jointly at the same site as our Berea Road refuse and recycling facility, which will allow the city to expand its water treatment and storm capacity in the Rocky River Valley and use the soon-to-be vacated space for that purpose. So last year, we conducted a City Hall space assessment in hopes that this would provide us with a path forward at the current City Hall. Unfortunately, the space assessment really kind of did the opposite and that it shows that even with substantial investments into the millions of dollars, it still doesn't solve many, many problems. And I would argue the number one would be the space within this building. But let's take a look back with anything that's important to look at the history and how we've gotten here to our current City Hall. City Hall has moved, evolved, expanded, and been remodeled over the course of our city's history. You see a few pictures of there of a couple of our City Halls. The first official City Hall was established around 1910 when Mayor Katabish led the purchase of a residence at the southwest corner of Warren and Detroit to serve a City Hall. That's the building on the left. Less than 10 years later, in 1918, the city bought the Robert Russell Rhodes Summer Home Mansion and its surrounding 23 acres. This house, the second picture up there, home, became the new City Hall in 1920, and the land continues to serve us as our wonderful Lakewood Park. In the 1950s, it became clear that the Rhodes House was nearing the end of its ability to house City Hall, and Mayor Frank Celeste led the effort to build a new City Hall and Civic Center. That building that was built in the late 1950s is still in use today over 65 years later, and here we are. Since opening in the late 1950s, the current City Hall has seen ongoing repairs and some upgrades along the way. But much has changed in terms of how cities do business, and it's been a challenge to keep up with the times in this aging building. Through the consultant study, we clarified several pressing capacity needs. I'm not going to go into all of them right now. I know Director Byington and Chief Fisher are going to talk a bit more about it, but one of the most pressing needs identified in the consultant report is the need for our female police officers to have their own locker room facilities. When our current City Hall was built, I'm sure many of you may be able to guess how many female officers we had, and that number was zero. Today, we have 14 female officers, 12 female dispatchers, and that number continues to rise. In 1960, they were unfortunately much less focused on making our buildings accessible as well. The ADA would not be passed for another 25 years, and our recent analysis shows a number of needs to address ADA here on our campus. These are two of some of the pressing challenges identified in the report, and it's clear that we must address these challenges now. And then at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Director Byington to explain some of the key findings of the space assessment itself.
Thank you, Mayor George, and members of committee. In 2023, the city accepted proposals from professionals to complete a space assessment, which would provide a recommendation on how to potentially reorganize department locations and functionality. The project intended to explore modernizing the building, creating office space, utilizing unused or underutilized spaces to provide a better employee relations environment, modernize security check-in stations, provide upgrades to the fire alarm system and control panels, and provide an acceptable amount of properly sized conference rooms with meeting technology offices and storage. The project also included modernizing the front entrances to City Hall and two elevators and providing more space for the police department's men's and women's locker rooms. To complete the assessment, facility study elements were analyzed, including interior architectural components, mechanical and electrical systems, fire suppression and fire alarm system, and emergency lighting, furniture, storage areas, et cetera. Departments were interviewed by Weber-Murphy Fox, and there was a survey that all employees were asked to fill out. From this information, Murphy-Weber Fox completed conceptual floor plans and estimates for renovation and reorganization of the current City Hall, with in addition to the police station, as well as the annex building across the street being renovated. Some of the overarching deficiencies include a lack of general desk and office and storage space, the need to make continued ADA improvements, improvements to customer service and experience, general modernizations, elevator and window replacements, as well as the fact that City Hall is located on the eastern edge of the city versus being centrally located. This time, I'll turn it over to Chief Fisher to go over some of the police department deficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can move it on. So like Director Byington said, the mayor expressed, when the building was built in 1958, best estimates we have is there was about 62 officers at the time. Obviously, not only the personnel makeup, like the mayor said, with no females, but I think we can all agree that things have changed since then, a lot more equipment, a lot more technology, a lot more need for storage, and these are all huge, huge issues. Our roll call room actually serves as the lunchroom, our kitchen, where we house our cameras, our batteries, our AEDs, and this is a place that is really the only place that officers can go to even take a five-minute break to get coffee or anything, and when they want to eat and other things. The dispatch center, obviously, with all the challenges going forward with them, they're going to need to be probably housed in a bigger place. Parking enforcement currently shares our locker room with SWAT. Our SWAT officers that serve on the West Shore Enforcement Bureau team, they have extensive needs for equipment. As you can probably imagine, they have specialty items that are all kind of crammed into this little area downstairs in the basement of our police department. Biggest thing, like we said, the women's locker room. The women's locker room was probably, at its best, could probably hold comfortably 10. We squeeze about 15 or 20 in there. The lockers are extremely small, skinny. I was in there the other day for the first time in a long time, and I can't imagine two or three females getting ready at one time in there. And like you said, I mean, we've got 14 right now, 14 female officers, and that number is just going to increase. Men's restroom, original, all original. So a lot of challenges going on in there. Same ventilation system, same showers since 1959, same tile, same everything, just a lot of upgrade needs. I already went over the roll call. Our evidence room, as you can imagine, evidence in cases, serious cases, needs to be held for a long time. And if we get, unfortunately, a serious case where we got to take many pieces of evidence, the evidence room becomes real small real fast. You see some pictures here. Bicycles just crowd, I mean, at lower right, that's a picture of our evidence room. Right above that is the men's locker room. Like you said, 1959 lockers, as you can see. A lot of guys have resorted to using the hooks on the walls of the locker room. Again, extremely cramped in there. When shifts are getting off and shifts are getting on, it's very tight. That middle one there, that's the women's locker room, as you can see. The need for space there is just self-explanatory. All that stuff on the other two pictures, that's down in Storage Room 5. Because of retention schedules and things like that, we have to take, we have to keep things for a certain amount of time, and we are simply running out of room. That also houses our mobile field force, equipment for officers that serve on the Web Task Force for Mobile Field Force. They have what we call turtle gear, head to toe, when we have to unfortunately sometimes go to civil unrest or something. Our helmets are down there, and all the gear that those officers utilize. These are all of the SWAT slash parking enforcement locker room. As you can see, again, just by the sheer size of it, if we get a SWAT call out, there's no way all of our SWAT guys can get ready at the same time. It's impossible. And if there's a SWAT call out, time is usually of the essence, so you don't want guys having to wait to get ready to go handle a situation that necessitates a SWAT call out. All of these things are just, this is just the tip of the iceberg. The Detective Bureau, we recently created a position for a technology officer, which has been fantastic. However, he is using the fingerprint examination room as an office right now because we just don't have any space for him. Special Operations, which houses our community officers when they're not in their own offices, but we have lieutenant, a sergeant, our logistics officer, all utilize that office mostly at the same time, and it's probably not much bigger than, you know, one of these tables here in between the tables. It's self-explanatory, I think, when you walk down there and just how a building that was functional for a police department in the 1950s and 60s just isn't all that functional for us right now, size-wise especially. You can go ahead. I think that was it. I'm going to hand it back over to Director Byington, who just give you some figures.
Thank you. Here in this slide, you can see a table which includes information from some other stations as compared to Lakewood. We looked at Illyria, Sandusky, Rocky River, Bay Village. We'll continue to look at other cities as well. As you can see, Lakewood has by far the most sworn officers and civilian employees with a total of 130, with the smallest station at 23,325 square feet. The next closest is the city of Valeria, which has a station that is over double the size, yet a total of sworn officers and civilian employees at just 82% of Lakewood's. Of the remaining three cities, all stations are larger, and the percent of employees compared to Lakewood varies from only 30% of ours to 40% of our employees. So I think that's a very telling slide. You all have in your packet the conceptual cost estimates, as well as some preliminary floor plans. In this slide, you can see the total. What we did, I worked with Mark Papke in order to put on an escalator onto their original estimates. We put a 5% per year escalator on, so that it was completed in '23. There's a 5% for '24 and a 5% for '25, so a total of 10% as an escalator. So City Hall, with renovation within the existing footprint, has a total of just over $15 million. The addition to the police station, as well as the renovation of the police station, is approximately $2.79 million, and the annex renovation within the existing footprint is $1.3 million. So a total of renovating and constructing the addition for the police comes to just over $19 million, and this does not provide any room for growth. So these costs include construction costs, but they also do include wayfinding, furniture, interior, lighting, technology, all of those things are also built into these numbers. This just shows where the proposed addition to the police station would be. So it would be two floors of police use, a total of 2,016 square feet, so just about 1,000 per floor, and then the third floor would be used for City Hall functions. So just an addition for, that would be two floors for the police.
Director Byington, would that be here, right?
That's where the red circle is.
Yeah, so it would be out of just space. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Or is it that way? Okay, I'm sorry, I got turned around. Is that correct, Mr. Thall? Going to the east? Okay. So then...
And also...
Okay, it's east, yes. It's going east. Okay.
And also, one of the restraints we have on this campus is we can't take up any additional parking spots, so that's why the location is there, and that's why it's sized the way it is, because it doesn't eliminate any additional parking spots because we are, there are issues with having enough parking for staff and visitors at this site.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to David Thall with Weber-Murphy Fox. He's got some comments in regard to the process and some findings. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the process. We started with surveys and questionnaires to all the departments so that we could figure out what the needs, what the desires are. As that was happening, we did a Matterport scanning of the entire facility. That's basically a device that scans every square inch of the space. We could really begin to document the existing conditions. It's where you saw some of the photographs coming from. It's a great reference to be able to build upon. From there, we were able to make digital drawings of your existing facility of all three levels, the ground floor, the first floor, and the second floor. And then from there, we received all the questionnaires and the surveys. We met with all the departments to see where to go from there and how we could fit this puzzle together. And what the conceptual plans that you have as part of the deliverables begins to show not only ideas of how some of these things could be solved, but with some of these changes and being able to find spaces that could be more efficient. It also caused other inefficiencies and some constraints, but it also shows the amount of demolition that needs to happen in order to make some of the new things happen. So those, you'll see that in the package, existing demolition and proposed. Just as an example, we were able to solve perhaps for current needs, not necessarily future needs of expanding the women's locker room and the police station, but then that then caused a much more reduced lobby for the police lobby, things like that. We were able to find some efficiencies and adjacencies by moving and relocating offices where folks would maybe be displaced from their department, but then that caused other things to get crammed. We were able to find some spaces where we could solve some of the ADA toilet rooms, but again, that took up room in some of the lobbies. So you'll find that we were able to meet needs that we noticed from the surveys, but then it also just, it's the limits, the constraints, and then really building for flexibility in the future is what we found to be the lacking part of it. Thank you.
Before I continue, does anyone have any questions, or do you want to wait till the end for questions?
We can take questions now if we have them specifically for this.
Thank you. This is a lot of information. One thing I'm curious about is I know we have the, kind of the architectural drawings with some references, kind of like a survey style. Is there an actual report as well from Weber-Murphy Fox? So the entire analysis is this?
So I could speak to that briefly. We have a narrative and analysis for the elevator renovations. That, we did a three-part study of different phases, option A, B, and C, narratives, report. From that report, we then prepared full documentation, construction documents to go out for bid, so we do have a narrative report for that that we furnished with regards to like sort of an executive summary. I would say that that stopped because the project went on hold at a certain point. So we were able to present the ideas, present the plans, and then that went on hold. So as far as we got were the cost estimates, and they're not just sort of high-level conceptual, they are high-level conceptual estimates, but it also went into detail because we feel that that's important to do. But on the proposed plans, there were narratives, so sort of scopes and narratives of what, of the work that would happen. But in terms of an executive summary, we were waiting for some responses to then do some further work, but then the project sort of went on hold. So that is something that we could follow up with, though.
And if I could add on that as well, to the point of going on hold, if you will, once we got the report back, that's really when it became crystal clear that we don't have enough space here. It became very evident that even with the millions of dollars in investment, I'll give an example. We have an open position for an Assistant Director of Public Works. That does not account for that position, and now we're back to people in closets again. So we have no additional space. So that's when it was paused to think about, okay, now what do we need to do to create the City Hall of the next 100 years? So that's just some additional information.
No, that's helpful. Thank you, Mayor. And, sorry, and just I would like to see whatever the work product is, just, you know, as we review all of this and go forward to start, you know, I'm sure, making decisions. So it'd be helpful to see the elevator work, and then if the work is... So I'm just clarifying that attached to our docket is, you know, some renderings with, I think, proposed, I think, existing and then proposed. I just want to make sure we have the universe of what's available to help inform our decision-making. I would appreciate if you could send counsel the elevator report and all that. Thank you.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Even after the renovation, if it were to occur, challenges remain. As the mayor said, there will be no room for growth. The conceptual floor plans do not increase efficiencies to the preferred level for the public experience, and renovation will involve relocating departments during construction. The cost is not quantified in the conceptual estimates, nor the temporary decrease in efficiencies for the temporary relocation of departments. So options moving forward, there's one, do nothing. Two, implement the recommendations from the study, you know, dig deeper, a little further into it, which included the renovation of the existing City Hall, the annex building and construction of the addition for the police department, again, not accounting for the temporary relocation of departments during construction. Or three, explore land for construction and/or buildings to renovate, to relocate appropriate departments into while providing additional space in the existing City Hall for police and courts. So we bring this to you today just to give you an update. It's informational at this time. Mr. Thall is here to answer additional questions, but we wanted to provide what we have to you, and I will look for the elevator assessment as well and get that information to you and anything else that I can find. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll first open up colleagues' questions. Go, Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Sorry I was tardy tonight showing up, so maybe I'm asking a question that is redundant with what's been said. So tonight, is there a question before council, or is tonight simply the first of, or maybe it's the second in a series of meetings, to mutually discuss this issue and the work by the administration to date of how you're thinking about this issue?
That's a great question, Councilman. This is just to get everyone on the same page of where we're at.
Okay.
That we've got the space assessment, this is what it says, and now we got to figure out our next steps.
Okay, and the space assessment study has been going on for, what, 12 months, 18 months?
About 18 months. I think this is dated November of '23.
Okay, thank you. And so these are the three options. This is helpful to know that we're not being asked to consider one option. Do you have a potential timeline? If, you know, if all things being equal, there were no unforeseen curveballs, and begging the question of whether there was consensus about moving forward with, you know, is this a next-year thing, five years out, 10 years out, or can you ballpark that? And then the real kicker is, what's the price tag of options one, two, and three?
Yeah, I think I would say in terms of timeline, it's fairly quick and immediate, but making sure we're doing all the due diligence that's needed because this is a big shift in whatever direction we go. But I think, I don't know if you were here for the beginning or not, Councilman, but what's really the challenge here is the police department and the immediate need to get appropriate women's facilities to address the size issues with evidence room and other pieces within the police department, and also the men's locker room, which is original. So there are truly immediate needs that we need to begin rightsizing the police department for our police officers. So, you know, here we are, this is a space assessment, and then we need to begin looking at how we tackle this.
Thank you. So I know we just invested in our police evidence room while you were on council, Mayor. That wasn't all that long ago. And there was the discussion of the shooting range, and there was space being swapped and all that kind of stuff. So I know that some investments have been made, but so if I'm hearing you correctly, the idea here would be, from the administration's point of view, at least your current thinking would be, you're trying to get your hands around some analysis and a decision in the next 18 months so that you could implement some of these potential options soon after that. So that's...
Yeah, I think we need to move, again, we've had the women's locker rooms on our budget for a couple of years now. It's beyond want, it's need with the number of officers. So we need to begin really diving into this and addressing these issues.
Yeah, I'm glad that there's more options than, you know, total rebuild. I mean, certainly, there's targeted needs, and there must be some solutions that can provide immediate working condition improvements for that important issue before the conclusion of this longer process. Maybe there's an annex for some that can be displaced and then more room is created. I know that's an interim measure, but those are options that are less expensive than $19 million and could work more rapidly, so I hope we're considering options like that. And, you know, for the police chief, I would also ask, you know, what's the right size? Like, you know, to me, I'm not sure we're looking to grow the head count at City Hall If we are, that's news to me, but since that's a major budget cost driver, both for HR, healthcare, and all those kinds of things, the tradition has been, we're keeping our head count more or less flat. The police department's been the largest in City Hall since I started way back in the Ice Ages, and we're proud of that investment and commitment. But are we expanding? You know, I guess the question for the police chief would be, how many female officers do we anticipate transitioning to? If we don't have a strategic plan for that, I would welcome that kind of a clarity so that any capital investment to support the staff would be correctly sized.
So, thank you, Councilman. No, the number of officers will stay the same. The number of female police officers, we're hoping, will grow exponentially. We don't have any way to judge that because future tests, you know, police department, to be a police officer, you have to take a civil service test. The numbers we've seen are increasing. Females are taking our tests at larger numbers than ever before. When I started, we had three female officers and 10 female dispatchers. Now we have 14 female officers and 12 dispatchers. So we've doubled the size of our female workforce and not gained one inch of female locker room space. I think the most telling slide is that one right there, where you have Rocky River, who's got a third of our personnel and has 15,000 more square feet. Illyria is the same way. They're about 80% of our personnel, and they're over double our size in area. The need for female accommodations is real and it's immediate. We have females right now changing in the men's Detective Bureau locker room. I don't think anybody is happy with that, but we're going from just getting by and making things work to, I think that we definitely need to hit the, like the mayor said, with the increase in female personnel, which is obviously very welcome, it's just going to get more and more pronounced.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strebit.
Thank you, Chair Keppel. I have a couple different questions. I think they're for you, Director Byington, but anybody that wants to jump in, that would be great. I see on one of these slides that the clinic across the street is gone, and I don't see that it got replaced into City Hall anywhere. Can you talk about what that was, what the function of that clinic is, and where it went?
I can speak to that.
I can speak to that. So, maybe 10 years or so ago, maybe even less than that, there was an onsite health clinic for employees. It was only staffed a couple of days a week for a few hours, so within the last few years, that has gone away. So, it was just, and that was some extra space for that clinic. So, that's about it.
So, it's not being used for anything right now?
Well, it's, I'll have to double-check what that space is right now, but we are certainly crammed in, in the annex. I don't know if anyone's been over there lately. We could certainly use any space, any open space there.
Thank you. And it seems to me, sometime in the past, that I was at that clinic, not as an employee, but as a citizen, and got a hepatitis series of shots there. I'm not sure why I would've been there, but I was just wondering if that had moved over to cover.
No, so, that would've been through our contract with Kihauga County for vaccines that replaced our health department that we used to have. So, that would be a space that was used for vaccinations.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that. And then, another question I have is maybe for the chief, maybe for Director Byington, and maybe for you, Mr. David, and I didn't catch your last name.
Oh, thank you. It's Thal.
Thal?
Yes.
Interesting to me, I've been in the female locker room at the police department, and I've seen the conditions, and quite frankly, it's disrespectful, and it is long overdue. And at the same time, I wonder, Mayor, when we talk, when we think about future generations that will sit here and say, and they didn't even think to have a transgender locker room, you know, can we think even further down the line? Yes, we absolutely have to have new facilities for the women, but could we also look at possibly having a space for all gender? Thank you. Gender neutral, all gender folks that need a spot that will eventually be on our police department. So, I would like to consider that. And also, then, when we, in that same line, when we start to look at the restrooms throughout the entire project, especially in areas where we know the public will be. I know I've seen lines out the annexed building on tax day, right? We know that people, there's a lot of people waiting in line there. We know that the general public is coming in to use our courts. So, those, I would like to see us really stretch and think about where we could put in all-gender bathrooms for people coming in to use those two specific facilities and possibly others. You know, I'm so appreciative to Mayor George and the administration for designating one here on this floor, so folks that come in to hear conversations in this auditorium have a place to go to the restrooms. And I would like to see that just throughout City Hall, if we could try and figure out how to get one all-gender restroom on every floor. I think that that would be very helpful. And you may or may not, Mr. Thal, be able to talk about that right now. The last one I wanted to mention was, I also noticed in the proposed floor plans, a lot of the storage being eliminated, and I'm wondering if Mayor George or Director Byington, if we're considering off-site storage for any of these things. And I know we've heard Judge Neff talk about, you know, the measures that they're going to eliminate some of the stacks, if you will, with their old paperwork and stuff, if these are also part of this plan to free up some storage space. Thank you.
Through you, Councilwoman Keppel. So, I would say that I don't think ideally anybody would like off from the storage. You'd probably like it to be closer. So, I don't think that's something that we're looking at right now. And as Mr. Thal stated, there were efficiencies and some areas that could be, some spaces that could be utilized, but when that happened, there was, when you do that, there's deficiencies or decrease in size in other areas, so the storage was one of them. So, that's just one other point that, you know, we're gonna, I know we're trying to shift stuff, you know, get away from paper, you know, get everything on the cloud, but there is a need for storage, and ideally, you'd like it to be, you know, at City Hall if you're using it, or need it in the future.
I can just add that as part of the original study, the, in the lower level, the ground floor, I think it was part of the building department. That was one area that there was an idea that that would go to digital. So, that was proposed to free up at least that area, so that was one solution. We did also talk about all-gender facilities as well. So, it was part of the discussion, and that's very common when we're working on projects, and certainly something we could further study.
Thank you. I did see, I did see the labeling of toilet room on a couple spots, and I did see an M/w on a couple, or in one spot specifically, and I'm just wondering if we could also, you know, list them as all-gender.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll go, Councilwoman Steiner, and then I'll come over to Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you, President Keppel. So, I want to thank, thank you, Mr. Hall, and thank you, Mayor, and your administrative team for your thoughtfulness thus far in being inclusive and accessibility. One of the things I saw on the slides, you were talking about customer service, and I want to know if the public has been engaged so far in this, and how you came up with that, like, if there were some surveys, or if there has been feedback that you've just have been collecting over the years of what residents have, you know, talked about, or discussed, or shared with you, or concerns that they had in regards to the space. I think when you're talking about a project of this size and the financial impacts of that, I think we have to be mindful that City Hall first serves the public, and so we want to make sure that that, that that's important, that we make sure that whatever it is that we do, that it is increasing their ability to access services here at City Hall. So, I just want to be mind, I want us all to be mindful of that. And then, the next is just for perhaps Chief Fisher, or anyone can answer, if you've reached out to Rocky River, or talked with them, how they did theirs, because I do believe they redid City Hall, and I believe they had, their police department was actually annexed, like, across from Lake The Lowes, over on Linden. So, I don't know if you had a chance to reach out to them and talk with them about their process and how they did all of that.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. So, yes, we did actually speak to them today when we were getting these numbers together. One of my sergeants spoke to their chief at length about what they went through. Their process was a little bit different. They put a bond issue or an issue on the ballot and got that approved, but they, I don't know the exact details of the conversation, but I know that it was helpful and it was fruitful between my sergeant and their chief, Chief Litchman.
Yeah, good.
And then, if I could add about the question about the customer service experience, that today, I would say it's dysfunctional at best. So, you, we're all familiar with how you walk into City Hall, and the resident-facing departments are scattered across the building and also scattered across the street. So, if you want to come in and pay your water bill, you go to the annex, and if you want to submit plans to building, you gotta drive across the street, come on over, check in with building, and so, and then if you want to come over to finance over here, you come up to another level. So, it's quite dysfunctional, so this plan doesn't address for the customer service experience that we truly want our residents. You know, it would be nice to have a better experience where a resident can come in to one facility and just, you know, visit the departments they need to interface with. So, that's an excellent point, in that this does not address the customer service experience. And also, talking about finance, so we have our finance department that is on the second floor, and as part of the finance department is tax and vital statistics, which is across the street. So, anytime Director Mahoney wants to have a conversation with half of her staff, she's gotta walk across the street, or somehow have them walk across the street. So, it's not very functional.
I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Evans, but first, I just wanted to ask, Chief Fisher, you mentioned the bond issue. Was that specifically for the police move, or for reconfiguration of City Hall and the new police annex?
That was for the Rocky River?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not exactly sure. Like I said, I wasn't in on the phone call, I just know that that's what they were talking about, about how they were, Sergeant Ackland was speaking with Chief Litchman about their process, and that was one of the things that came up. I think it was, I think it was specifically for the police department, but I, don't quote me on that.
If he would be willing to just send us, you know, some of that information, I'm just curious how they handled it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilwoman Evans.
Thanks, Chair.
Just, sorry, Councilman, just to add onto that, I think what's really important for the public to know is that anything we're talking about here today within our rich history is that we don't anticipate, you know, requesting additional dollars from our residents for this. We have to find a way to manage this without asking any sort of additional dollars. So, I want to make that clear. That's what we're talking about.
Thank you. It's a good point, and just, as this meeting, as I anticipated, and I appreciate the nature of the questions and the conversation is information gathering, and y'all know I'm a librarian, I like all the data I can get, so. All right, Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks, everybody, this is a great discussion, and for all the work that's been put into this so far. I think we're all in agreement that the police department's certainly facing some efficiency of space issues that need to be addressed. My question, kind of the last slide, the three options, do nothing, and number two, obviously, we know what one takes, we have a good outline of what number two is, but looking at number three, have we started to go down this road? Are there conversations about this, or are things being looked at? Options on the table? What kind of costs these things could occur, just based on, you know, try to compare what these things are? So, how far down that road have we gone?
Yeah, Councilwoman, good question. I think once we got the space assessment back, took a deep dive into it, we began, started brainstorming of, okay, what could next steps be? What could next steps look like? Knowing that, you know, we're landlocked here in Lakewood, what options are there available to us? So, that's kind of where we are, is looking, you know, is there land? Are there buildings? You know, what makes sense? And that's kind of where we're at, is looking, you know, what would make sense to potentially move some of the admin staff out of this building so that the police have enough space in this building?
Thank you.
Vice President Baker.
Thank you, President Keppel, and thank you, administration, Mr. Thal. What is, do we know what the square footage of this building is? It sounds like the slide that talked about maybe limited to the police department. Do we know the total square footage of the building?
We do, and we can get that to you.
Okay.
I believe it's on the...
By floor. It's about 30-some thousand square feet.
It's on, in your packet, and I can pull up, I have the number. It's in that cost estimate. City Hall is 77,169 square feet.
Okay, 77,000 square feet. All right, thank you. The other question, in looking at some of the space study, and this is more directed at Mr. Thal, you know, I'm mindful of this in my day job. Actually, just talked to our park director about this today, and, you know, he came to the park district, and they left for him the idea of, do you build a new administration building, or do you renovate, or what do you do? And he's like, oh, great, this is a great decision I get to make when I first come in. And so, he thought about it, and what the park ended up doing was kind of a renovation and expansion over a course of years rather than all at once. Using, I mean, and I lived through it as an employee of the park district, at times, folks were, you know, in the basement for three months, kind of in temporary workstations, and then they moved into their space, and kind of, over the course of, I think, five or six years, it was completed. Wasn't great, but, you know, you gotta do that sometimes. So, I guess I'm curious of, in looking at this proposed site plan, you know, what's on the table at City Hall? A, there's, you know, 6,000 square feet of a parking garage, and then the other thing is kind of like the middle of the U, right, of the building. Was there any other, ever any discussion or thought about putting like an atrium there and having like a central hub to then access the rest of the building, or we just didn't get that far? I'm just curious.
We just didn't get that far, but I think that's certainly a next step, for sure. The real guideline was to stick within...
Sorry, Councilman, we need that, that's where the Sallyport for the jail is. That cannot, that's like the only place we can, and the jail as it exists right now would be something we probably wouldn't touch because of, if we touched, started touching that, we opened up a whole new can of worms with jail compliance standards that our grandfather did on. That Sallyport is needed right there.
Okay, so, when you say Sallyport, you mean there's a vehicle entrance right there?
Correct.
Now, I'd imagine that any construction, I guess what I'm, is I, so you're saying we just could never do any construction there?
You'd need that driveway to access the Sallyport.
So, is there any way to, yeah, I mean, if you, I'm assuming that at some point, construction would need to occur somewhere on the bill. I guess what I'm saying is, I think we shouldn't foreclose that as an issue, because I do think that there, I mean, justice centers and police departments have been worked on before, and solutions have been, I'm not saying that's the solution, I'm just saying that I don't think we should foreclose it because we need access to a driveway there. And so, that's why I'm thinking about, generally speaking, the problem that I see with the current City Hall is the space issues we've clearly outlined here this evening, and to the mayor's point, it's the public's interaction with this building. Oh, if it's a night meeting, you come in the back door, if it's a day meeting, you go in the front, but are you there for court, or are you talking to getting your building permit or whatever? So, it's very confusing as to which door you go into, which doors open, which doors not, security. That's why I'm thinking, and just curious, as we explore every option, because I think we're duty-bound to the city to do that, it does seem that there is a potential for some sort of central atrium in the middle of the U, understanding that it could potentially create issues short-term during construction that may need to be resolved. So, that's all I'm saying, and I am curious if the architect looked into that, or they've seen other cities do things like that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the initial study really was limited to the existing building only, and the addition to the east was at the very last minute because of some ideas of constraints within the police department that we were noticing right away, and that there was a sliver of space that could potentially be built upon, but it wasn't, the study wasn't meant to look at any new additions at that point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Marks. Oh, go ahead. Mayor George, do you have?
Well, I just want to clarify about the U, if you will, for lack of a better term. As Chief said, that's needed by the police department. It's next to our jail. As the chief mentioned, we cannot begin to structurally change the jail at all. So, although, you know, perhaps whoever, Murphy Fox, wasn't involved in that part of the internal discussion, that does, to the eye, look like a great spot to do an addition, but unfortunately, with discussion with the police department, it's just not realistic. So, I just want to make that clarification.
Councilwoman Marks.
Thank you all for putting such hard work into this. I have a question for you, Mayor. It seems like this is an urgent situation. What, do you have any kind of timeline on this?
So, I believe Councilwoman Evans asked a similar question, in that, you know, we need to move expeditiously because of the issues with the police department, the women's locker room, the men's locker room, the lack of space. So, you know, this is to have a discussion of where we're at, and then, you know, we're gonna continue to look to see what options we have to resolve these issues. So, I don't have a timeline, if you will, to gather, but I do know we need to, we need to act.
Thank you.
Council colleagues, any further questions? Councilwoman Bullock.
Thanks. This is a helpful conversation. Thanks for being here, and for, to the administration, for presenting what you've had the chance to analyze to date. So, you know, whether it's right now, or as a follow-up, I welcome a price tag on options one, two, and three. I think I'm hearing from colleagues, there's some other options in between two and three that could also be explored. We may not have price tags for those. The benefits of a potential renovation are what? Could the administration spell out? renovation are what? Could the Administration spell out? It sounds like the, most of the focus has been on the internal space needs, but I'd certainly welcome that being clearly articulated. You know, I've heard from council colleagues that, for more than one, the concept of improving the customer service interaction. So I don't know if we've got that organized coherently. What I think would be helpful from my point of view is to understand the trade-offs. We've been making do with an older building. It's been invested in significantly. It's not not been invested in. Now that said, there certainly are needs. And Chief, if you're willing to give us a tour so we can see not just the pictures, but be there in person, I'd certainly welcome the chance to learn further. But we've also been working hard to be cost-conscious to the taxpayers who have given us the feedback that Lakewood has a pretty significant tax burden. So there's a balancing effect. And I guess part of what I'd like to understand from a macro-budget perspective is, if we were to invest in City Hall renovations at any price tag, what will we not be able to afford elsewhere in the community? Whether that's in a park, or at intersections, or road resurfacing, or any other need. And of course, we talk all the time about that. So this is a not-small potential capital investment that's going to affect multiple years. There's probably also a price to disruption if, you know, during any big construction. And I guess that that kind of thing is unavoidable. But, you know, to me, to be able to realistically put a decision before the community, we got to understand, you know, if City Hall's getting option A, or B, or C, or D, what does that do for, just to pull an example out of thin air, a Madison Park pool reinvestment, which is also badly needed and has had less investment than City Hall, you know? So I'm not, you know, making any big declaration. I'm just trying to understand or share the trade-off and the complexity of a big decision like this. I certainly appreciate a good start we're having tonight to try to get into the details. So, thank you.
Councilman, thank you. And there have definitely been some improvements. The fire range, that has been, thank you, it's excellent.
The dispatcher room, although it may be due for some more.
What's that?
The dispatch room.
The dispatcher, yeah. So again, I know we use the words make do, but I think that we can all agree that any organization's most valuable asset is the personnel that works there, and the manpower and the woman power that make the city run. And I think just making do, we're not even doing that right now with the women's locker room and the facilities that are right now being utilized. So I think that we definitely have to keep them in mind, too. I'm a resident here, been here forty-seven years. But I also have one hundred and thirty employees that we also have to take care of. And I think that the personnel is really, again, our most valuable asset, and we need to look out for them as well.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I had a chance to do a tour of the police station with your predecessor, and it was pretty eye-opening then, how tight particularly the women's locker room was then, and we've added more officer, female officers since. So that's why Councilwoman Strebig and I both put the female locker room as one of our priorities, or two-year priorities, last year and into this year. So, and I know other council members are concerned about that as well. We also, and to Councilman Bullock's point, you know, this is a helpful beginning of this conversation. You know, we're trying to balance a lot of things here. We're trying to balance our fiscal stewardship to the community, prioritization of where this money gets invested externally, internally. We're trying to make sure that our staff has efficient and functional and appropriate workspace that, you know, is respectful of their hard work for us here in the community, as well as making sure that we are planning for the future. So it's a lot, it's a lot to do, and it's a lot to do on an expeditious timeline. So I appreciate this open conversation tonight as we begin that dialogue. So appreciate everyone's time. And if there's no further questions, comments, then without objection, we'll adjourn committee of the whole, and we'll start full council in just a few minutes.
All right, we'll call to order the February 3 meeting of City Council. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Leage. Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Keppel?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Steiner?
Here.
Strebig?
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 21st, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the special meeting of council held January 27th, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Then, without objection, I would like to move item 11 to the top of the agenda.
Item 11, Resolution 2025-04, a resolution to join with states, municipalities, and other jurisdictions around the country to designate February 2025 as Black History Month in the City of Lakewood, Ohio, by celebrating African-American culture and paying tribute to the contributions of African-Americans.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on there. And moving to discussion, and I just want to first thank our clerks for getting this on the docket for tonight for us. I believe last year was our first year actually passing a Black History Month resolution. And we want to make sure, this year in particular, it was very important that we do this. You know, this year more than ever, I think it's important that we recognize that Black history is American history, and that America is built on the contributions, both voluntary and involuntary, of Black Americans, and that it's very important that we recognize the strength of our African-American members of our Lakewood community, as well as the contributions that Black Americans and the Black community beyond has made to our Northeast Ohio community and our country as a whole.
With that, I will open it up for discussion. So, council members, Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you. Thank you, President Keppel. I recently heard a news commentator quote Jimmy Carter on his views of America, and he said, "We become not a melting pot, but a beautiful mosaic." Different people, different beliefs, different yearnings, different hopes, and different dreams. And I thought that was beautiful, and I wanted to share that tonight, because it's so important to recognize our individuality and what everyone brings to the table and the values that each and every person has. And I'm happy to recognize and support February as Black History Month again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Councilwoman Hamilton-Steyner?
So, I have a shirt that says, "I am Black History," and it is meant to indicate and serve as a statement of the contributions of Blacks, as well as a nod to our individual places in history. It is a socio-political statement, but also a firm truth. After meeting with and speaking to actual history makers and survivors of white violence and trauma, I have been remiss to wear it out of fear of not living up to the strength and courage of those who have come before me. Three years ago, I traveled to Selma, Alabama, with college students on a service learning trip. We worked with the Selma Center for Nonviolence, Truth, and Reconciliation, receiving training in restorative justice, peace, and conflict resolution, learned about the beloved community, participated in a community service in the community, and gained a deeper knowledge and understanding of American history. We met those whose efforts we stand on. Lynda Lowery, the youngest person to march from Selma to Montgomery, and Dr. King's barber, Nelson Malden, where Mr. Malden and his wife welcomed us into their home, and we spent a half-day learning and discussing history and the next civil rights movement. There is nothing wrong or illegal with discussing, learning, and sharing Black history. There is nothing wrong or illegal with acknowledging the past to understand and address the present with the intended purpose to reconcile and move forward together. Our past is not something to shy away from or ignore. Our past is a roadmap of where we have been, highlighting our accomplishments, victories, struggles, and truths, and provides important wisdom if we are willing to listen. We must now have the courage and speak truth to those in power and yield any power and privilege we may carry to make good on the work of those before us. Black history is not just for Blacks. It is for everyone. After all, it is American history. I want to thank my fellow colleagues for displaying courage in supporting this resolution and for their support of racial justice and equity, inclusion, accessibility, and belonging in Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilwoman Marks.
Thank you. I have always been proud of Lakewood for honoring February as Black History Month, and I welcome Angelina Steiner onto our council to show that representation. And I think we all have to remember that Black history is American history, and we need to embrace it and recognize it and grow from it. Thank you.
The other colleagues? Councilman Bullock?
Thank you for the eloquent words tonight, especially Councilwoman Steiner. And thanks for bringing forward the proposal. Happy to support the motion tonight, and, you know, look forward to celebrating this month in our community.
All right, we do have some folks signed in to speak on this. So when I call your name, if you want to come up to the microphone, push the button until it turns green, and state your name, if you feel comfortable, your address for the record, and then you'll have up to five minutes to speak. But don't feel like you have to take up the whole five minutes, but you're welcome to do so. All right. So first up is Maureen Lynch.
Okay. My name's Maureen Lynch. I'm at 485 Santrap Circle in Painesville, Ohio, Lake County, but I'm all over Northeast Ohio, and I have family in Lakewood. I really appreciate this resolution, especially in these times, because I'm so angered and frustrated by where this country is appearing to go. There's a wonderful element to this part of our world here. It is the cultural gardens that bracket Martin Luther King Boulevard in Cleveland, and they represent not countries, but people. And it is people who have made these cities, this state, this country, what it is. There was a reference made, I can't see your name, about a mosaic, and it reminds me of an image of stained glass. Stained glass is made up of several different colors of glass, and they look beautiful when their sun is shining behind them. But if a couple of those pieces of glass are gone, the sun shines through and it blinds the viewer, and then we can't see anything. So, in my opinion, any action that seeks to minimize or marginalize or deny any group of people at all is simply unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Jessica Cotton. Button's already on, so you can just talk.
Thank you. Jessica Cotton and my address, right?
Yes, if you feel comfortable.
Oh, 1601 Orchard Grove. I don't have anything prepared, but I want to thank Lakewood, the city of Lakewood, for recognizing Black History Month once again. It is important to recognize not just Black History Month, but all the residents that live here were diverse. So, let's continue those efforts, and it will make the city of Lakewood stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't think we have... Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think we had an e-comment also submitted. That's not it, okay. I think, I'm not sure it went through, but she sent it by email, too. So, oh, yep, come on up. I'll let you do, and then I'll read this one. Go ahead.
All right. Hi, my name is Deja Harris. I'm a foregirl, the address. Extremely nervous, sorry. So, I represent Lakewood Black Caucus. I am the Marketing Director for Lakewood Black Caucus, and we have something prepared here. I'll go ahead and share it. Black History Month is celebrated to honor the rich heritage and resilience of Black people despite facing historical oppression. It is also a time to acknowledge African-Americans who have made significant contributions in society. On Saturday, February 15th, Lakewood Black Caucus will host a community event to recognize key figures, achievements, and struggles throughout the Black community in our history. Our theme is telling our stories now and then. Angelina Steiner Hamilton, our guest speaker, will give voice to present day experiences, and storyteller Michelle Rudolph will honor the past. Join us at Lakewood Presbyterian Church, February 15th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So, that's our event we're going to have. We basically, we started this group through Patricia Wellmore, the late Patricia Wellmore, who's passed, and this was her mission. She just wanted to create a group where there was a space for Black people to come together in Lakewood. Simple as that. No strings attached, and just create a space where we could come talk about community problems within our community and the greater community as a whole, and also be a liaison and support to our Black community. And with that being said, we are launching a mutual aid program where we are aiming to assist people within the community with tortury goods and different household items that they might struggle with in the times to come. So, that's my piece. I'm super nervous, so I'm going to end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, and you did a great job, so thank you. Yes, and the comment that we had was from Shirley Nelson, who is the president of Lakewood Black Caucus, also sharing that event and expressing support for the resolution for Black History Month. So, thank you both. Thanks all for speaking. Do you have anyone else who wanted to speak on this issue? I don't see anyone else listed on... Okay, all right. Any further comments from colleagues? All right, so we have a motion before us to adopt Resolution 2025-04. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And I'd like to invite anyone who would like to join us down front for a picture with a copy of the resolution.
Item 1, Report from Committee of the Whole, held today, February 3rd, 2025.
Your colleagues, Committee of the Whole met earlier today to discuss the space assessment of City Hall and the annex, including the police facilities. We discussed about how the need for space for female officers and the locker room, as well as other space issues regarding modernization, ADA compliance, and other issues affecting staffing, customer service, and efficiency. We explored various options at a fairly surface level, but this is beginning conversation as to how to move forward. Councilmembers asked a lot of thoughtful questions, and we had a presentation from the administration presenting options, including doing nothing, implement some or all of the recommendations of the space study, or explore other options, including land for construction or buildings to relocate some or all of services. I will move to receive and file that oral report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 2, Ordinance 2, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
We will move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Yeah, sorry, it wasn't on my copy. All right, so we're going to... Yeah, oh, so 3 is in between? Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll move to suspend the rules to read items 3 through 10 together?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Bullock.
We do have a February 18 Finance Committee meeting scheduled. The Finance Department and the Clerk, Council Clerk Bullock, worked promptly the last time, so we're ready to go for all of the ordinances you're about to describe, and we expect a presentation from the Bond Council and the attorney that works with, or excuse me, the banker that advises the Bond Council and all of us. So, we look forward to completing that or getting into it on the 18th. And any councilmembers who may have questions, please send them in advance. You don't have to, but to the degree that you are able to, it helps us prepare. Thanks.
Thank you, and that is a good note, too, especially since we have more members of the public here than sometimes we do. So, all these ones that we're moving to defer have already been referred to Finance Committee, so that is the upcoming meeting these talking about and referring to the bonds ordinance. All right, so the motion, it's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to read these items together. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 3, Ordinance 3, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into equipment leases and forms approved by the Director of Law on behalf of the city of Lakewood. Item 4, Ordinance 4, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $6,320,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of constructing a refuse recycling facility, renovating refuse truck parking facility, replacing or improving the roofs of public buildings, including the municipal facilities garage, improving the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems at the fire station, improving parks, including pavement and sidewalk resurfacing and construction, lighting and landscaping, together with all necessary site work, infrastructure improvements, and appurtenances thereto, improving the sidewalks within the city, and improving Bunce Road, Crest Lane, Gil Avenue, Anandega Avenue, Wayne Avenue, and Webb Road, and other streets located within the city between certain termini by resurfacing and replacing concrete, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and retiring notes previously issued for such purpose and approving related matters. Item 5, Ordinance 5, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $2,200,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving Edgewater Drive, Summit Avenue, and other streets located within the city between certain termini by resurfacing and replacing concrete, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters.
Item 6, Ordinance 6-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $4,500,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving City Hall, Winterhurst Ice Arena, Fire Station Number 3, Public Works Garage, and other city facilities, including renovating city facilities, improving the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, constructing a storage facility. Item 7, Ordinance 7-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $9,325,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of designing, engineering, and constructing water improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters. Item 8, Ordinance 8-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $300,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving sidewalks within the city and approving related matters. Item 9, Ordinance 9-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $500,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving parks within the city, including Lakewood Park, Kaufman Park, and other park improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters. Item 10, Ordinance 10-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed $10 million in anticipation of the issuances of bonds to pay costs of designing, engineering, and constructing sewer improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters.
Thank you. I will move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 12, Resolution 2025-02, a resolution to take effect immediately, appointing Councilwoman Cindy Strebig as liaison to Community Recreation Education Commission for a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025.
So, this, we were being a little overly efficient, so we've actually already, we've already appointed Councilwoman Strebig to this term last year, so we can move, I'm going to move to postpone this item indefinitely.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, Councilwoman Strebig, for your continued service on this committee. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 13, Report from Lakewood Alive Board of Directors Meeting, from Vice President Baker.
Vice President Baker.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, Lakewood Alive Board of Directors met on January 15th at the Lakewood Library for its bimonthly meeting. The meeting kicked off with a discussion about wrapping up a successful 2024 and upcoming strategic planning process for Lakewood Alive. Moreover, a recap of Light Up Lakewood, many thanks to numerous volunteers and partners in the city that helped staff the event and Giving Tuesday. Lakewood Alive raked four yards with the Board of Directors' staff and non-staff volunteers and exceeded fundraising goals for the day were given. The various committees then gave reports. The highlight was when the Development Committee shared the news that the year-end, end-of-year campaign was successful with increases in both donors and amounts raised. Councilmembers looking to get more involved with and support Lakewood Alive can attend the annual Loving Lakewood event scheduled for February 22nd. Tickets are on sale now, online, and I'll be there, so will probably most of my colleagues. Or talk with me about joining the committee or participating in a volunteer project to help a homeowner. For a full list of Lakewood Alive's upcoming events, please subscribe to their weekly newsletter. Thank you, and motion to receive and file.
Second. Motion's been made to receive and file. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 14, Communication from Planning Director Byington regarding acceptance of 2025 NOPEC Energize Community Grant Program Award.
Director Byington.
Thank you. Dear councilmembers, the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, Energize Community, NEC, grant program supports city building efficiency and decarbonization projects at government, commercial, and residential properties. Funding can be used for a variety of projects, including lease or purchase of plug-electric vehicles, traffic signal upgrades, energy-efficient windows and appliances, electrical upgrades, tree canopy restoration, LED lighting upgrades, and insulation. This year, Lakewood has been awarded $157,800 through the NEC grant program. Funding from the NEC grant program is crucial for helping support the city's commitment to decarbonization and clean energy and implementation of the Climate Action Plan. Past funding has been used to support LED lighting replacement projects, purchase of two electric bikes for the Police Department, and LED scoreboard upgrades for Winterhurst Ice Arena. Additionally, the city has been awarded $3,500 for the 2025 NOPEC Community Event Sponsorship Program. The city awards this money to Lakewood Alive to help defray costs of their front porch concert series at the main library. It is requested that council pass legislation accepting these funds from NOPEC for the NEC grant program so the city of Lakewood can continue to implement energy efficiency, decarbonization, and sustainability initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. First move to receive and file the communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Councilwoman Bullock.
Thanks, Madam President. Thank you for the discussion and the good news. NOPEC has been a longtime partner of Lakewood. This is a wonderful program that's resulted in quite a healthy amount of dollars awarded to the city. When I was speaking with some NOPEC folks last year, I understood we had in excess of $450,000 from several years combined. Now, I think we obligated some of those in the budget that we just adopted, but here's a new award. We get quite a lot because we have such high participation from our actual residents, our customers. I'm a double customer of NOPEC myself, and so that contributes, you know, some nickels and dimes that add up to this, and we've made good use of it over the last 10 or so years. I would like to have more of a discussion this year about how we use those funds because I think we can get creative and do some resident-facing programs. I know the city of Athens, for example, had a lawnmower buyback program where you could swap your old polluting gasoline-powered for either discounted or, you know, depending on how you design it, free electric mower. That can work for some residents. Things like that could be a new way to approach it. We could also, you know, allocate additional funds to do new measures in the implementation of our Climate Action Plan. I know we've been doing LED lights and plug-in electric charging stations for quite some time, but I think it's worth the discussion is what I'm driving at. I guess I'd welcome City Council's thoughts on how we might make use of some of these funds as well. I know that the Planning Department does some thoughtful initiatives from this pool of funds, but it could be a strategic use opportunity for us.
Other councilmembers? Discussion? Vice President Baker.
Thank you. Perhaps there's a way to refer the communication to committee to talk about it more and then pass the ordinance or resolution. to talk about it more and then pass the ordinance or resolution. If council would like more information on that, just a thought.
Yeah, I checked in with Director Byington prior to this meeting, so we don't necessarily have a rush, but I also don't want to stand in the way of accepting funds at any time for the city, and I don't believe that accepting these funds necessarily obligates them to a certain purpose. We did, as I recall, some of them, we were anticipating in this year's budget, but I think there, there were some additional funds, so it was worth that conversation as Councilwoman Bullock mentioned as well. So I'm certainly happy to refer the communication to committee for further discussion and perhaps adopt the resolution. Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner.
Thank you, President couple. Is this a grant? So would there be terms and conditions that would limit how we can spend the money or is this unrestricted funding?
Thank you. I don't have the grant agreement for me, but I'm assuming that there are restrictions and you have, you can only use it for eligible activities.
Yeah, so that might be helpful to have that information as well if we're going to have a discussion about it because there, that might negate the necessity for a discussion if it's pretty clearly laid out in those terms and conditions.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put that together, as well as just a reminder. Some of the money, there was a good amount that was carried over as Councilwoman Bullock has, had stated. The majority of that and some of this has been set aside through their approved capital plan, but there would be a little bit of dollars left, so I'd be happy to put that information together for discussion.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, so with that, I will maybe amend my motion and refer the communication to Public Works and Sustainability.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item fifteen, resolution 2025-03, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the City of Lakewood to enter into an agreement to accept NOPEC Energize Community Grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item sixteen, liquor permit for sacred hour at 17514 Detroit Avenue.
Director Fargo.
Thank you, Madam President. We just respectfully request that it be deferred. The report is in process, and so it should be no problem for the next full council meeting. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And that brings us to public comment. We do have a number of individuals signed in to speak. Believe you're all here before, but when you approach, you, the microphone's on, so you don't have to push anything. I'll call your name. When you come up, if you feel comfortable saying, please say your name and address. Address your remarks to the chair. You'll have up to five minutes to speak. Please keep your remarks civil. All right, first up is Scott Wilster. Welcome.
So I'd like to just request a change to how the pedestrian walk sign works at the intersection of Franklin and Bunce. So just how close is the high school? It's probably the most trafficked intersection by children. And today, if you're going east to west, you get the walk light when the flow of traffic goes with you. But if you're going north to south, so like uphill to downhill, you have to press the button before. And what's particularly frustrating is if you were on the west intersection and you want to go, let's say, catty corner, you want to go southwest. If you press the button at the west intersection, you walk across the street, start heading south, you won't get the walk light at the east intersection. So it's not about timing of the walkways. But I see a lot of children walk through it. Oh, sorry. I live at 1584 Parkwood, so I walk by it a lot. I see a lot of children just ignoring that walkway, and it's rightfully so because it's pretty hard to actually get it to work right. So I would like suggest that the closest intersection to every school always has automatic pedestrian greens in every direction with the flow of traffic, wherever it works with left intersections, and that intersection, particularly at Franklin and Bunce, because there are no left turns, I think it would make sense to have both parallel to traffic lights turn green for pedestrians every time.
Thank you. I see your Public Safety Director writing that down, so I'm sure that we'll, we'll be investigating that. So thank you. All right, all right, and then next up, Josh Matur. Welcome back.
Good evening, everybody. Josh Matur, 1520 Cohasset Avenue. First wanted to welcome Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner to council. Thank you for all of your service and the continued service. Really excited to work with you going forward in the future. And really just wanted to come in tonight to say thank you to all of council, members of the administration, the mayor, et cetera, for all of the wonderful and productive dialogue we've had over the last month and a half or so, or two months now. Gosh. We've, you know, tackled some really interesting and difficult topics and come up with some really, really valuable solutions to different things. And there's a lot of exciting work coming up in Lakewood over the next couple of years. You know, saw some new stuff come out about Edgewater and some of the resurfacing plans there. Those are really exciting and some really, really unique and just very awesome safe stuff going on there. Excited for Bunce and saw some of the most recent updates on Bunce and everything. So some really good stuff happening there as well. And again, just really wanted to come and give thanks for the continued dialogue and for all of the work that you're all putting in on this every single day. Also wanted to invite everybody to Bike Lakewood and Spin Bike Shop are having a winter social on the 21st of this month. That's at 6:00 PM, so it's open to anybody. It's just kind of a social event. Come get to know your local shop, some of our folks. It's, you know, free food, free drinks, and stuff like that. So again, thanks for everything that you're all doing and look forward to continuing discussions in the coming months.
Thank you. Great, and next up is Matt Herberger.
Pardon me. My name is Matt Herberger. I live on 1448 Bunce Road. Okay, five minutes. I come here, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly who to address, but I guess I'm addressing all of you. I stand here to state my opposition to the proposed multimodal path planned for Bunce Road. To be clear, I support the road repair, the upgrades for sewer and water, upgraded lighting, improved crosswalks, et cetera, et cetera. It's my personal opinion and everyone I've talked to who lives in the neighborhood or outside the neighborhood, the path is unnecessary, it's ill-advised, it's poorly thought out, and it's a misallocation of limited public funds. Now, I want to be clear. I'm not opposed to bike paths as a general principle. In fact, I support them, but not this one because it doesn't make sense. Not in any way. It's absolutely the wrong idea in the wrong place at the wrong time. So why do I say this? Well, it's interesting. This gentleman here just spoke because the lack of public input is my first thing. And if I pick three or four of my neighbors on Bunce Road, they literally have 200 years, not even a handful, 200 years' experience living on that road. No one came and spoke to anyone. Apparently, people have been working very closely with an bike organization, but no one approached the people on Bunce Road for their opinions or for their input. And guess what? If you came to us, we'd probably give you some good ideas, and we could probably come to a resolution that makes sense. This doesn't make sense, okay? Couple of items. I'm worried about continued maintenance. No provisions have been made or budgetary, future budgetary considerations made for clearing and maintaining this. Snow removal. You're going to get a special truck? You're going to put a man out on the road, or a woman? Pardon me? To clear when the roads need to be cleared, a one-and-a-half-mile bike path? I can see it's not going to get cleared. It's not the proper throughway for bikes. This bike path goes from 90 to Clifton Boulevard, 90. No bikes travel on 90. It passes by gas stations. It passes by an automotive store. It passes by a grocery store, another gas station. It's not a bicycle lane. It also has 100-plus driveways. Each one, less than 50 feet apart. That's not a bike path. That's not a bike path in anyone's imagination. The impact on pedestrians. This is a walkable street. It's a nice, walkable street because it has a large barrier of grass and tree lawn between the road and the park and the sidewalk. That's going to be removed. Our high school kids travel every single day, not by bike, by foot. People walk their dogs, not by bike, by foot. This is not an appropriate passageway for bikes. And what will happen, which I've seen, is down in the metro parks, when you have a multimodal, what do the bicyclists do? They ride on the street, even though you've built a perfect roadway for them because they are impeding, impeded by pedestrians. Destruction of established tree cover. And I, I find this, I'm sorry, I'm going to go a little bit over. There's this, this false narrative that more trees are going to be the result of this plan. The trees we have now are 40-year-old trees. They're healthy, they're thriving. That you, all of you support a canopy, tree cover in this city. We're all working for that. All of those are torn out to be replaced by a three-foot sapling. The size of my finger, I've seen them. I've walked on the streets where they've been planted. Those, that's apples and oranges. You are not getting more trees. You are getting far less tree coverage.
Thank you. I do have to respect the five-minute time limit, so it's fair.
I do. Pardon me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Amy Herbert. Perhaps you can pick up with us.
She's much better than that.
No, I'm a nervous wreck. Okay, okay. Good evening, evening, council members and fellow residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I come before you with serious concerns about the proposed Bunce Rehab Project. While we all agree on the importance of improving infrastructure, I believe the current plan raises significant issues that must be addressed before we move forward. Let's take a moment to stop and think about what's being proposed. The plan includes a bike lane with 116 intersections, just over a 1.5-mile stretch. This setup, as it stands, simply isn't safe for pedestrians or drivers. The risks are substantial, and it overlooks the realities of our community's traffic patterns and safety needs. According to the own city's documentation, streets like Bunce Road, busy with high-traffic volumes, aren't ideal for bike lanes, especially when there's little demand from the local community. In fact, fewer than 3% of the local high school students rely on bicycles as their primary mode of transportation, and most cyclists would likely come from the east or west corridor, not the north-south, going to I-90. As taxpayers, we need to ask ourselves, is this really how we want our money spent? The project doesn't seem to align with the needs of the community. The more we examine it, the clearer it becomes that we, that we could be squandering valuable resources on a plan that does not benefit us. Another major concern is the lack of transparency throughout the planning process. Many of us, myself included, feel blindsided by this proposal. It's critical that we, as a community, are informed and involved in decisions that directly affect us. Transparency isn't just a buzzword, it's essential. By the time this plan was presented for approval, many had already invested hours in conversations, meetings, and concerns, only to find that much of our input had been ignored. This lack of collaboration undermines the very purpose of this project. Then there's the environmental impact, where, where is the comprehensive assessment of how this project will affect our air quality, noise pollution, and overall ecosystem? Removing over 190 mature trees, may of which have been standing for decades, will directly harm our environment, and these trees help filter the air, manage rainwater, protect our homes, and maintain a healthy tree canopy. Without them, we risk increased temperatures, potential flooding, and even more noise pollution. We cannot ignore the fact that we're putting our community's health at risk. Speaking of safety, let's consider the safety of our children and pedestrians. We have 96 driveways, two supermarkets, one convenience store, five church exits, three gas station exits, two high school exits, one railroad, two electrical transporter exits, and four major intersections on this stretch, okay? The proposed plan would essentially turn what is now a sidewalk into a roadway for cyclists. Bikes belong on the road, not on the sidewalks, and this design creates real risk for accidents. And who will be responsible if a child or cyclist is injured or worth killed? The lack of clarity around liability is concerning. And what about the increased traffic congestion? Bunce Road is already a heavily trafficked street. Adding another lane and a 10-foot bike path could create major gridlock for homeowners, along with safety concerns for everyone, cyclists, drivers, and pedestrians alike. We need to ensure that we have a solid plan to address these issues before we move forward. In terms of maintenance, who will be responsible for keeping these new bike class, bike path lanes clear of debris and snow removal during winter months? Our residents are already struggling with road maintenance, and there has yet to be any clear answer on how this new infrastructure will be cared for year-round. Will the city need to hire additional workers? Will the funds come? Where will the funds come to support this maintenance? Additionally, the impact on homeowners has yet to be clearly addressed. As residents directly affected by this project, I still don't know how my property will be impacted. How will changes to driveway and property access be managed? Will the design be both functional and visually appealing? The lack of clear information on this issue is troubling. In conclusion, I respectfully urge the council to pause and reflect on these concerns. We need to develop a comprehensive and transparent plan that takes into account the environmental, safety, and logistic needs of our community. Our neighborhood safety, well-being, and long-term sustainability depend on thoughtful and informed planning. Now is the time to explore alternative options, as Bunce Road may not be the safest or the most suitable location for this initiative. The funds could be better spent on projects that more directly enhance our safety and quality of life. Thank you for your time and attention to these important issues, and I look forward to, together, to find solutions that truly serve our best interests of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is Kevin Dugan? Duggan? Dugan, got it right the first time?
Kevin Dugan, 1530 Bunce. Done already?
He was too good. There was, nobody could follow her, so, yeah, we're resetting it. There you go. Sorry.
I'd like to thank my neighbors for some great comments. I'm also opposed to the bike lane for myriad reasons. Economically, do you guys just see what happened with the price of eggs? You think that's not going to happen to construction material? Then I've got a bridge to sell you. Any project of this magnitude is going to go over budget, over time. So how long is it going to take? How much is it going to cost? Where's that money going to come from? We don't know. We'll hear different stories and then pay for it later. Safety. I was a firefighter for 28 years, firefighter, paramedic, in a neighboring city. I've been on accidents. I was on a fatality. Car versus bike, car wins every time. I was on an accident where a 16-year-old boy became a quadriplegic. You don't want to see that, okay? Like they said, this isn't a bike path. You, bike path down in the valley, that's a bike path because it's uninterrupted. And again, the bikers don't even ride on it. They ride in the street. So that's going to happen on Bunce Road, guaranteed. I'm a lifelong Lakewood resident. I love Lakewood. But again, this is ill-advised, like we heard already, for all those reasons. And it, it comes down to, we weren't consulted in any way. So what is it going to do to our, the value of our property? Are we going to want to leave? I mean, we're, we're here, we've been here 20, on Bunce Road for over 20... I mean, we're, we're here, we've been here 20, on Bunce Road for over 20 years, and we love it. We have to deal with the traffic, the, the school kids, and now we're adding another, making it, making it busier. The, I had a truck parked on the street. It got hit six times. My neighbor's son-in-law's truck just got hit the other day. I know the, the answer's gonna be, oh, we're making it wider. It has nothing to do how, how wide it is, it's the volume of traffic. You've got semis coming down there. It, it's, it's just a bad, bad idea, and we, we should've been notified in advance when it was in its infancy of planning, because it, again, we could've compromised somehow and, and come together. I think it's fixing a problem that doesn't exist, and it's, we're, we're not the, the beneficiaries of said plan. So again, I think, like my neighbor said, we need to pause on this. I can't imagine how the, just the, the many other economic needs that this gets to the front of the line to get done, when there are so many other issues that need to be solved with, with those funds. So I'd like to see some changes done, but thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Shannon Morland.
Good evening. My name's Shannon Morland, I'm at 2125 Bunce, so right near Athens. I am also opposed to the multi-use path, shared-use path, anything you wanna call it on Bunce. It has numerous concerns for safety and quality of life for those of us who actually live on Bunce and will be the most impacted. I'm not opposed to bike lanes anywhere in this city, but I am opposed to a bike lane or a multi-use path on Bunce. It just doesn't make sense, as my neighbors have proven already. According to the Ohio Department of Transportation's Multimodal Guidelines, and I quote, "Paths can function along highways for short sections or for longer sections where there are few street and/or driveway crossings. Given appropriate separation between facilities and attention to reducing crashes at junctions, two-way side paths can create operational concerns." As it stands now, this path does nothing to pay attention to anything that ODOT says. We ask that City Council and the City of Lakewood do three things. Make safety of all residents your top priority, not just people on bicycles. Use common sense. And consider the people this path will actually impact, not just one small special interest group, as it is now. Unless you live on Bunce or have spent some time on it, you have no idea what the trends are on that street. You can't possibly. So for a bunch of people to come who don't live on Bunce, who don't normally travel down it every day to get home to and from work, and, and many of the other driveways and locations on Bunce that we've already talked about, you can't possibly know. So again, I know I've made, I've extended this before, but as the weather gets better, I invite all of you to my front porch to sit there and actually watch, not just send out a surveyor to take some photos and stand there and just write down some numbers, but actually watch. I guarantee you'll have a different perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Morland.
David Mortland, 2125 Bunce Road. I'm gonna be the worst one of the bunch, so I'll get through this, all right? Obviously, I'm here to speak against the proposed bikeway, multi-use path. Overall, I really do like this program. The improved sidewalks, street design to slow down traffic on street parking, which I hope can be 24/7, and enhanced lighting. Safety was brought to mind with all of those. However, safety does not seem to have been considered when the city agreed to create a 10-foot multi-use path that will encourage people to ride their bicycle, scooter, skateboards, and motorized bicycles at high rates of speed. At the same time, they will cross a driveway every few seconds. People will be hurt, unfortunately, possibly killed. That leaves residents of Bunce and the city ripe for lawsuits. We ask that the city consider putting in a north-south multi-use path on another less-traveled street. As proven by your own drive to enhance safety along Bunce, the street already has enough traffic and dangerous conditions. The city should not add more problems to an already busy street. Nothing could ask also, June will be 25 years that Shannon and I have lived in our house on Bunce. When we moved in, we fully understood the traffic that's gonna be on Bunce. We also enjoyed the walking aspect of Bunce, which we do regularly. Now we're adding a new piece in that just does not seem to make sense for the neighborhood at all, okay? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Karen Hudson.
Hi, I'm Karen Hudson. I live at 1512 Bunce. I'm also opposed for all the same reasons. And one of the other reasons is if you're gonna take a lot of my double strip and my front lawn, there's not gonna be any buffer for my grandchildren or some of the other kids that play in the front yard. We had one really bad accident a couple of years ago. A guy flipped his truck. The only thing that stopped him was between the tree that was on my tree lawn and the telephone pole. Otherwise, his tire ended up in my neighbor's yard. If there was not that buffer, I don't know where it would've ended. There's been three cars in the last two months that have been hit at night during the day on Bunce, within my house. It's, there's too many high school kids that walk it every day. I don't understand the need for this. I can see that you wanna ride a bike, but Bunce Road is so busy with all the cars, the trucks, the high school kids, dogs, walkers, kids. I would really, and, and one of the main things is, I never got any kind of notification, none of us did, in our mailboxes and say, hey, this is what we're proposing, what do you think? No questionnaire, no nothing. We didn't know about it until it was already a said-done deal. Again, maybe we can pause and work out another solution. The last I heard, you were gonna take part of my front lawn. I don't want that. We just got, you guys just planted a bunch of trees on our side of the road, cuz you wanted a canopy. You're gonna take that all out, because if you cut it down to two feet, I've been told all those trees are gonna be killed. We need to come up with something. I like the trees, I like the buffer, I don't want any of my front lawn taken. Unless, and plus, I just paid for sidewalks not that long ago in front of my house, so do, if, you know, you can give me my money back on that, that would be great. But we, we just need to kind of figure out another solution, maybe another kind of way to go with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Dugan, but it says LBC, so not sure if that's, that's okay? I just, I'm, I'm assuming since same last name, it's on this topic, but it was, so just, this is the topic you wanna talk about? Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Wendy Dugan. I live at 1530 Bunce Road, and for all the same reasons, we're opposed to the multi-use path. And, and we use, you know, the, the, we're obviously for an active Lakewood city and community. We bike, we walk, we make our way to, you know, to Lakewood Park. The sidewalks are enough of a throughway, it's a short distance to the park that we can walk. And I just think, again, we, we would invite anyone to try to back out of our driveways. It's very difficult, except, especially for those of us who are right by the light at Franklin in Bunce. We often have to wait for lights for people to allow us out of our driveway. Foot traffic, you know, strollers, dog walkers, it's already adding volume to an over-volumed street. So for that reason, and for safety, we are opposed to the extra bike lane. Thanks.
Kim McDonald.
Good evening. Kim McDonald, 1460 Bunce. We jokingly say we live on the Bunce Freeway, which, you know, it's almost accurate that it's a freeway. You know, this plan that's been put forth, it looks really good, it sounds really good, it's the kind of thing that, that would seem to be good for our entire community. But the issue is our busy street. And that's, that is my biggest concern, is the safety of the project. So I always like to start to say, you know, we do live on Bunce Freeway, but it's really, it's our neighborhood. And the traffic has increased exponentially over the years. I've been there for 45 years, and between the get-go and just, I mean, that, that put a lot more traffic on our street, but it's extremely busy. So I feel like that extreme amount of traffic because of 90, because of the high school, the get-go, the grocery store, and whatnot. As a result, we have the, a unique problem, which my neighbors have spoken of, the unique problem is how difficult it is to get out of our driveways. We have a lot of foot traffic, and it's not just school hours. The kids are, you know, to and from school, but now they're allowed out at lunchtimes, and they're back and forth. But we have quite a bit of foot traffic because of the stores and the, the bus route. So as, as a result of all this traffic, it's really difficult, it's unique, I think, among most of our streets, to get in and out of that driveway safely. So, and it's a narrow street, and so getting out, getting in, and having pedestrians, it's one thing, it's not easy, but, you know, we manage. But to add bicycles to that mix, you know, they're going faster, you're looking, you're seeing kids walking, that gives you time, but someone on a bike, that could, they could come pretty quickly, and I foresee accidents happening, and I sure don't wanna run into anyone. But the pressure too, as you're turning into your driveway with, you know, a big line of traffic behind you, it is difficult. One, one plus of the plan that I see is they moved on our, on our block, they've moved the parking over, which would be a help, but nonetheless, it's still gonna be very difficult. So the last reaction time, that's what, that's what I feel like. You know, I had asked people at the city and people in the biking group, like, what's the precedent for having a shared-use path like this in a, an urban area where it is in front of homes, between the homes and the street? And the examples I were given in no way relate to this at all. It's usually in a city where there's no driveways. It's in countryside, like on the outside of developments where there's very few driveways. But I understand this is kind of a new concept, that ODOT has just been designing their roads now to, to include pedestrians and cyclists, which, you know, it makes perfect sense. But our city was designed mostly for roads, so it's kind of taking like this new idea and cramming it in there between our sidewalk and the street. And it really, I don't think goes, it doesn't go on our busy street. I would like the funds for this bike part of it taken and use that on a different street. So, and then, of course, there's the tree consideration, which has been brought up, but I know so many of us just love our trees. I've had this tree that survived a car crash amazingly. A car, a car was hit that was parked, not even in front of my house, the next one, it was, took a chunk as it was pushed up, took a chunk out of the, the light pole, and my tree, which stopped it from coming onto my property. It's a beautiful tree, it's probably been there for 20 years or so, and it's gonna be very sad for all, for all this canopy to, to be lost. So I think the city should reconsider and come up with a better plan. Thank you.
All right, and then last but not least, signed in to speak is John Rustad.
Good evening. I'm John Rustad. I've been, she mentioned 45 years, I've been on Bunce 47 years. And within the last year, my car was parked in the street, and that neighbor who was just before me knocked on my front door. My car was on my tree lawn. If my tree lawn is cut down, where would the car be? If the tree wasn't there, where would the car be? If we have a 10-foot bike lane with bikes, pedestrians, motorized bikes, motorized scooters, what happens to children playing in the front yard? I don't think a 10-foot-wide bike lane with driveways every 40 to 45 feet makes any sense on one of the busiest streets in Lakewood. I think it needs to be reconsidered and redesigned. And everybody else has already mentioned all the other issues. I just wanna say I am also against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed in yet but wanted to speak? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Celine Sanderson. I live on 1490 Bunce Road, and I agree with everyone. And I've only lived here 20 years, sorry, I'm a newbie, but I agree 100%. And when I see streets in Lakewood with bike lanes such as Hilliard, I see the kids and the bikes on the sidewalk anyway. So I don't know, quite know what that's going to add to our street. We don't need a wider street, we don't need fewer trees, we don't need smaller tree lawns. We need our little street, improve it, new sewer, new streets, new lights, whatever, but we don't need this. It's, it's awful. And I do feel as though my house was just appraised, I had paying more property taxes, and this is what you guys are gonna do? But nobody checked with us, nobody asked, no one walked through the streets to knock on our doors. So I agree with all my neighbors, and thank you all for being more eloquent than I, but I strongly disagree with this proposal.
Thank you. All right, that's everybody who have signed in for public comment. Last chance. So I'll just thank you all for being here, and we appreciate how important these items are for you, that you take time out of your busy schedule to come here tonight and speak to us. And I know several of you have spoken to us before, either here or at our community conversations, written in to us, et cetera. So a couple of things. One, I'll just want to acknowledge that there isn't an item currently before council on this, on the, on this. So, you know, the council forum, the public comment forum provides a chance for this feedback, and I'm sure we all take that feedback to heart and, and are hearing it with open minds. We, we don't currently have anything before us to vote on with this item, but I'm sure we'll keep this feedback in mind. I don't know if any members of the administration wanna comment on this. I also want to acknowledge that recently a new website or webpage was put up on the city's website with more detail on this project. So for those, I'm sure everyone here from Bunce Road is intimately familiar with all of those details, but for anyone else tuning in who is not familiar and wants to understand what this conversation is about, you can check that out on the city's website. There are renderings as well as timeline, the, the budget, the plans, and further detail. So I just wanna share that. Any members of the administration wanna speak before I turn back to colleagues? It's okay if you don't, just want to, okay. All right, all right, so announcements from council members. Announcements from the administration. All right, with that, no further business before council, without objection, we're adjourned.